Alright, meeting is now session, brought to Pledge of Allegiance.
Move the flag.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You blew the flag on us old people, you don't think I haven't? Alright, welcome everybody, glad to have you all this evening. Always good to have guests and visitors. We'll move on to the agenda. So, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Uh, John?
Yes?
Shall we wait till pay bills to face like ocean?
Well, if you do it earlier, it helps us to do the math in advance.
Okay.
Tell us which ones you'd like to take out.
Um, just a minute, I gotta find them.
Okay.
Uh, I would like check number, wait a minute, oh. Um, hold on a second.
Oh, we can wait.
Oh, no, I got it, okay. Um, I would like check number three three zero seven two seven to F M G for one, F G M, I'm sorry, for one thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty-nine cents voted on separately from the rest of the bills.
Okay.
And I would like check number three three zero seven four three to Hodges and Louiezy for five thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents voted on separately.
Okay. We can do that, are there any other changes to the agenda? Then, I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Go home.
I have a motion by Anderson, second by Mundah, Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bianchi?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Very good, uh, the next item on the agenda is reception of visitors, and this is the portion of the agenda where anybody that wishes to address the board may address the board. Nobody has signed in, so if there's anybody here that would like to address the board that has not signed in, they may do so now. Okay. No one wishes to address the board, so we have no visitors, so to risk, yeah, no one wants to speak. So we'll continue on, um, Carol, are you doing the math for me for this?
No, I can remember right now.
Alright, just for the, I don't need it right now, we can do it later.
Okay.
Couple things, um, have come up recently and, um, and have, that I'd like to, uh, bring up and discuss with the board, and maybe we can, don't have to discuss in detail today, but, uh, this week we had, uh, in Gurnee, there was the luncheon, fundraising luncheon for the Zacharias Center in Gurnee, which is the, the center that, um, does outreach for sexual abuse victims, also is their advocate at the hospital, they do many, many things and a lot of great work, but they also have, uh, programs through which they'll come to schools and train staff, or even talk, have students talk to students, how to react, how to identify these things when they're happening, and how to react, and I, and they're so close, and, uh, I just thought it would be something that we might want to explore, having some sort of relationship with them when they would come over and, and do some training for us as, because we think it's something that happens when it's older, but it happens to a lot of children, and it has a lot, happens to a lot of teenagers. So I would, uh, I'd like to have, you know, just make that one of our things that we do is, it could be an institute day, it could be a lot of things, I think would be, that's something we want, would be.
You're thinking in terms of, of teacher, teachers or?
No, teachers and then they-
And students.
They have, they have students that actually do outreach, they're, they come in and talk to other students, and, and just, and it's really about helping them identify and react to the situations and, and know, have the confidence perhaps to say, hey, that's not right, you know, you don't get to do that to me, or whatever. So there's a lot of, many issues around it, but I, since it's, I think it'd be a good thing for us to start to work on maybe as we move forward, so.
And I, I know we do have some relationships already with that center, and we do have some articulation with them, so maybe our next meeting, we can start by at least updating, getting on the same page with what we currently do, just so that we're aware, and then obviously explore a little more on those. Sound good?
I think that's great, I really do, because a lot of our teenage girls are unaware that they are being abused by their dates, and so I think that's a very good topic to be discussing. Thank you, John, for that.
Me too, I agree, a hundred percent, we should be talking about it all the time. Uh, the other thing is that I've, um, there was a, a shooting at UCLA relatively recently, I don't know if anybody saw this, CNN, um, their webpage had a picture of students trying to tie the door closed from the inside, because they didn't want to go out in the hallway to lock the door. It wasn't a nice shooting, it was a murder, which is terrible too, but the school went on lockdown, and then, they, they had the same style locks that we have, that you can't lock from the inside, so no one wanted to go in the hallway to lock the door, because that's dangerous at that situation, so. I just want to bring up the fact that there are locks that, that you can buy that have keys on both sides, so you can lock from the inside, and, uh, I know that at this point we can't afford to go to every lock, I just want to make sure that if we're replacing locks, that we replace them with safer locks than what we have today. So, I know a lot, a lot of locks, I, I'm not going to sell them to the school, but I can sell these type of locks as a part of my profession, so I'd be happy to help anybody figure out what they are.
John, isn't there a really cheap fix supposedly that you can put on them that, I think it costs like twenty-five cents or something, I remember reading it last year.
I don't know that there's a twenty-five cent fix that will allow you to lock the door from the inside.
I, I, I just remember reading about it, I'll try and find it for you.
Not that I know of, but that doesn't mean it doesn't exist, for certain types of locks or situations, we have very high quality locks in this building, but they're the standard that was made, you know, in the nineties, when nobody worried about locking the door from the outside.
I think what Lisa, what you're referring to, there are slides, like on the top of the door there, there's actually a slide that goes over the hinge, and so prevents it from coming over.
Yeah, yeah, you can figure out why it's mechanically locked, if that's true.
Okay, thanks, Mike, I, I knew I read it.
So anyway, I just, it's just another thing that's been on my mind, so. And that's it? Does anybody else has anything, well, we have no committee reports, so we'll go on to recognition.
Great, thank you, Mr. Anderson, we are really privileged tonight, uh, to have tech campus represented here, and, uh, Mr. Thomas is here, and later on in our meeting, he's going to talk a little bit about our program, and our annual departmental report on our tech campus program, but, uh, there are a few students here that we'd like to recognize, especially, uh, award winners and scholarship winners, and, uh, especially the two that are here tonight, because we do have a few more that were invited, but being over the summer, we always know that our attendance is always a little less likely to be here, so, uh, these two young people that are here, obviously are, have gone above and beyond and brought family with, so we appreciate that, so, Mr. Thomas, would you like to, uh, explain to our award winners here this evening?
I would, if you two would like to come over here please for a minute. We have Grace Winkleface, that was my.
Never let you back in the room, you never know what'll happen.
And Vince Gratt, uh, two outstanding tech campus students. Grace was Program Student of the Year, she's only a junior, in the game C++ programming class, which is so intense, I can't even tell you how hard that class is when it comes to, you have to be a computer genius in there, and she is apparently, because she's an A+ student in there, and, uh, as a junior, and she was named Program Student of the Year by the teachers in that program, naming her the best student in that program, so I'm very proud of her, and she's an outstanding student, and I'm looking forward to having her next year as a senior. Vincent also is an outstanding young man, straight A student, uh, both these students are straight As, also here in this building, in their classes, they really work hard at tech campus and at Warren. He's in the welding program, a top student in that program, um, he earned a, we're very proud of him, he earned a two thousand dollar scholarship from the Rotary Club, um, for his effort. And he's going on to college, uh, now he's graduating and moving on into the mechanical school in Ohio, so he starts in a week or two or something like that, so. I have two outstanding young Warren students, so, thank you.
A lot of jobs.
Aren't a lot of jobs.
Extremely.
Uh, Vincent, by the way, the two thousand dollars, thank you, Mr. Mundah, it's two thousand dollars that he won, actually, the, uh, local Rotary out of Gurnee, uh, issued three five hundred dollar scholarships from Vincent and two other students from, uh, Warren, were recipients of that. Vincent actually got the other fifteen hundred because his, uh, his name was passed on to the District sixty-four forty Rotary, which is pretty much northern Illinois, and Rotary's a large organization to begin with, so he competed against a lot of other, uh, well-deserving students, I'm sure, but, uh, when they called and told us that he was actually winner of the additional fifteen hundred from, uh, the district level, we, uh, those of us that had met him prior weren't surprised at all, but we were so happy for him, to help his education, and where are you going, Vincent?
Ohio Technical College, straight Cleveland, so.
Right, and you're, when are you leaving?
Uh, sixteen days.
It's not the luxury of a, a lay-for-day leave, but, uh, good luck to you.
He came straight from work, you know, he's a, he works full-time, he's not lazy at all, he's a hard-working young man.
We had, we had our Rotary meeting, we met at seven-thirty, uh, at the Holiday Inn, and we asked Vincent to come just to, so the, uh, Gurnee Rotary could get to know him a little bit, and we get there, it's the first thing we do, right, because it's seven-thirty, he had already put in a half-day work when he got, so, it was lunch for us, so, good luck, uh, good luck to you, Vincent, and congratulations, so, we're lucky that you're going to be with us next year too. And I do like to make one other, a recognition if I can, I'm going to ask Susan Suweng to come up with me, and she's going to talk for a few minutes tonight, we kind of come by kind of recognition in programming, so you can pass those around, but, you know, Mother's Trust, um, I've been familiar with Mother's Trust for a while, just in terms of their work and living, I mean, what they've done for individual families, and so, my path has crossed with them over time and realizing how they change, uh, lives of kids, but I didn't know the impact that they had for a number of our students here at Warren, and we'll let Susan talk a little bit about the program, but the reason I wanted to bring her tonight was obviously, we have close to three hundred kids annually that we send, uh, to the tech campus, and, uh, that's awesome for, uh, those students, but sometimes some of those students, just the simplest things, or the supplies, or some of the extra money that it takes to go through those programs, isn't an easy feat, right, and so, the nice thing is, is there's, it's like, uh, Mother's Trust Foundation that are, that are to help families, and, uh, so I'd like to first, uh, just give Susan just a little recognition on behalf of us, thanks for generous support of our students, not only here at Warren, but across Lake County, because they do awesome work for all the great reasons, so if you can, we just congratulate Mother's Trust. I also wanted to make sure that I gave her the opportunity just to share, for those of us that don't know all the great work that Mother's Trust does, a little bit more about their organization, so.
I promise not to take too long, but how many do know what Mother's Trust Foundation does, where we are, what we do? So briefly, very briefly, we're a foundation that's been around for eighteen years, it was started by Barbara Matson when she was seventy-three years old, she's ninety-three last week, and she's still with us. The goal initially, and still, primary mission, is to assist social workers to assist their, their clients and/or students that they're working with. We, a large part of our mission is to work with school social workers, because they work most directly and purely with the students, so there's not a lot of family intervention in that, they have the, the straightest line to what the students and children actually need, and so, for Warren High School in 2015, one of the things we love to do is to help with tech campus and educational programs, and even the sports fees and things like that, because this all goes directly into the child, and it, it, it works to that sustainability piece, which is, most foundations are going to say, before we give you money, how are you going to show that this is sustainable? There's nothing more sustainable than investing directly into a person, something that cannot be taken from them, and they are willing to work hard, so, in 2015, as I was going to say, we, um, allocated about seventy-five hundred dollars to students for Warren, for the tech campus, so it was a hundred and twelve students that we helped sponsor for Warren High School. Out of all of Lake County, we had, we, we sponsored a hundred and seventy, so a large portion of our sponsorship for tech campus does go to Warren Township High School students. And, and again, being the size of school that it is, I'm a former graduate, my nieces' nephews', children, everybody's been through school, so, um, it's a, it's an important, um, school to be a part of, because it has such a large impact. Um, we also, uh, in 2015, sponsored twenty-eight hundred dollars, a little over twenty-eight hundred dollars in sports fees, so, we all know that when they don't make the, the level with the school lunch program and things like that, there's still that gap where the hundred and fifteen, hundred and seventy-five, two hundred dollars, they don't have to sponsor the child or to pay for the child's sports fees, so we will, are one of the few agencies that will pick up that kind of funding. Um, our goal is to do gap funding, to provide funding where nobody else will, so if there is an agency that will already provide that funding, we ask that they go to that agency first. Primary other, uh, goal that we have and our mission is to do a quick turnaround, so twenty-four to forty-eight hours, um, is generally, you, you put in a request for funding, and within that week, we review it, and then we get the funds back out the door. Had a big call us a couple of weeks ago, and had a student and needed, um, immediate shelter, so within, we didn't even wait for our, our meeting that week, we went ahead and we went out to the hotel and paid for the shelter, and meeting missing students a week or two a week. Um, that's where we try to fill in, yes, there's cadence, there's other things, but in this particular circumstance, we had to help that this was the best way to handle this problem, and we rely upon the social worker and the relationship to do that. In 2016, we've helped, um, with about eleven hundred dollars to the tech campus so far, for the skills conferences, another thing that we really are, um, happy to help, because we feel the students have worked that hard, if there's a, the fee should not be something that, that, um, does not allow them to, to participate in that conference, and so, we have helped with that, and also the summer school, the cosmetology kits, and some of those kits are, you know, two hundred and fifty dollars and such like that, so we look, you know, we are there to help with that type of thing. In addition, as you can see, the paperwork that I handed out talks about all the other ways that we've helped, but we are really trying to maintain our mission, um, and, and making sure all the schools understand what we're here to do, and that the staff and the schools are aware of us, so that we can continue to help. So thank you all, and very graciously accept that recognition, and, um, I wish all of you the best, wonderful job in the field, and I'll try to do it. Thank you all, very much.
One other piece that I forgot to mention was the, Susan, as executive director, we didn't, you know, we had an initial conversation about her role in, uh, Mother's Trust has a, a little bit east of us, right, there's a lot of the communities that are there are really familiar, more familiar with Mother's Trust, and yet, you know, Gurnee is right in the center of Lake County, and so, our presence and awareness of what Mother's Trust does for our children through the social workers is critically important in terms of just spreading the word and the, the, uh, resources through Lake County, so, it was just, because Susan's a active community member too, it was critically important, and we thought, wait a second, we've got to make sure that we start with Gurnee and Warren Township High School, make sure we're aware, you know, as we spread through the county, so that was one of the reasons that we had a conversation.
Yes, and, and I will just throw this in, um, we have a board rotation, and as every other foundation does, and anybody who may be interested in working on our board, we would be happy to have, as a matter of fact, I am trying to, you know, I, I did the same thing, exchange club, exchange club members, and I said, trying to move some of it a little more central, uh, we have several board members that are in Aniak, and our offices are in Lake Forest, and I, I mentioned, we may see about even using some of the bicycle facility to help a board meeting, is, and, and kind of more, pull it a little more centralized and get more of, um, that awareness, and, and pull in more of the people in the area to, to help, so if anybody wants to be, we're welcome to have you, and anybody wants to come to one of our fundraisers, I will be sure to get that word out too through the emails and.
Be ready.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to transition out of our recognition portion of our meeting, or so, which means that families are here, then you're more than welcome to stay through the rest of the meeting, but this will be an act of time to play this.
Make a run for it.
Thank you for coming, thank you for coming.
Lieutenant Superintendent Porter, we have to transition, so we ask Mr. Thomas to give his annual update, just about, um, our technical, this program in general, our numbers, and where things have been this year, where they might be wanting to be informed.
Okay, just going to use this table here, look at some of my notes here, as you mentioned, we roughly have, uh, yearly basis, roughly around three hundred students attending tech the last several years, we did have a year with four hundred and five students several years back, but we've kind of settled in this three hundred range. We have twenty-two programs out at tech campus, we send every program, uh, and some more than others. Um, I will mention, there were thirteen other students invited today, um, they did not show up, I invited them and their parents, um, we had one, two, three, four, five, six students who were Program Students of the Year at tech campus, meaning they were the top student in that program, according to their teacher, the best student, A+ students, I can mention their name, Lauren Constantino in criminal justice, Diana Gomez in culinary arts, T. McWard in the criminal justice program, they had two in that program, Teja O'Brien in cosmetology, uh, Raul Reyna in firefighting, and Grace who was here in the game programming C++. Now, we have five students that won of the Skills USA competitions in Springfield, and were invited to go to Louisville, Kentucky for the national competition, for the Skills USA, um, competition that they have there, that's, uh, going to be in June, June twenty-first to June twenty-fourth. Um, those five, Ethan Belair in the game C++ programming, Zachary Luligren, game C++ programming, Sam Melendez, game C++ programming, they entered kind of as a team, and they're very good, and I'm expecting a good result from them, I'm hoping for, uh, in Louisville, we hope so anyways. Uh, Ashley Kraus in cosmetology, Diana Oragel in cosmetology, all those students seniors, so, um, and our Program Students of the Year, they're all juniors, so, and they're all going to be back next year in those programs. The other two scholarship winners, Melissa Cannon and Morgan Griffin, they each won five hundred dollars from the Rotary Club. Twenty-two programs at tech campus, like I said, we send skills to every program, um, I picked the top six programs where we send a large amount of students into those programs a year, uh, the last two years, um, I'll cover them, uh, rather quickly here, uh, we sent thirty-seven students last year into the CNA Medical Assisting Program, the medical type classes, uh, medical assisting's year one, CNA's year two, this coming year, we have thirty-nine signed up for that class. A big, big program, auto services, repairing of cars, and the mechanical aspect is, uh, we had thirty-five students last year, forty-four going this coming school year, there is also another class that's getting more popular, the auto, um, collision repair, you know all those TV shows with the bodyworks and all that, um, I just got an email the other day, the tech campus, that program now is closed to new students, it's filled up, the classes, these, um, young people want to take that class, um, but our biggest one for Warren is the auto services mechanics, and next line, in line is the cosmetology, where they're learning hair, hair and nails, makeup, um, that is, uh, you can go one year, but if you go two years at the end of that program, you can get a, uh, cert, and you take, pass a state test in the state of Illinois, you can get a cosmetology license. Last year, we had thirty-four students in there, this coming year, thirty-six students. Popular program, culinary arts, last year, thirty-four, this next school year, twenty-nine culinary arts students, they become licensed if they pass the test in sanitation and licensing, which is, you have to have that license to work in a restaurant kitchen, they get those right away. Uh, next popular program would be the game programming C++ class, um, we had thirty students in there last year, twenty-eight going in there next year, and finally, a newer program, it's only been out there maybe five years now, criminal justice class, it's pretty popular, last year, twenty-seven, next year, thirty-one, so, um, and we're, we're closing in on three hundred this year for the number of going out there. I want to thank the school board for your help and your, uh, and the school administrators for supporting the tech campus programs, and, uh, we have a lot of stu, you know, three hundred students going out there and, uh, doing a nice job out there, and without your support, uh, we wouldn't be so successful. We are the number one school to send students to the tech campus, uh, so, um, now, I do make a lot of those Mother's Trust requests, you know, but they are kids who, you know, she, they probably think that I'm crazy when they give my requests, but, uh, these kids, they, they come to me, I don't seek them out, they seek me out, they need support, and, uh, I, you know, do the paperwork and we get the funding, and they're very nice and helpful, so. Questions at all?
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
There may be a few other items to update, uh, the board on, uh, first off, thanks to, uh, I think we've got a full, full, uh, group going to the triple I conference potentially, so we're, we're taking care of those reservations, uh, for our triple I conference in November. Um, we're moving forward and planning, uh, pending the board's approval tonight on contract with Great America for September seventeenth, we're moving forward on that planning, we're really excited about that, on Thursday, we have a follow-up meeting with them to start to get into the details of what the program might look like and ticket sales and some specifics, but, uh, it's still going to be a very, very exciting date, so we were excited to add that to our list of a hundred items. Uh, we, we've had further meetings and discussions about August twentieth, so, uh, we, we do have a bear's practice scheduled, uh, at Oak Plain, uh, from about five-thirty to seven-thirty, eight o'clock or so on, uh, August twentieth, uh, that hasn't, I don't know how much that's gone public or not, you have to, it's out there, it's not, it's not a secret, but, uh, we're also kind of letting them take the lead on, on all the publicity of that, we're just trying to work with them as much as possible on staffing the events and tickets, and, uh, if any board members, uh, do need tickets, it's a, it's a free event, but it is ticketed, because we'll have some kind of, uh, limit on capacity, I'm sure, just based on the facility, and so, if, if indeed there's board members for your families, if you are requesting that, please just email me, and we'll make sure that Kim knows that, she's kind of taking the lead on, on that, uh, part of the project, so, we're excited about that as well. Uh, we had two FOAs come in since our, uh, last meeting, one from, uh, Better Government Association, they were looking for information regarding, uh, our communication with, and, deals with, uh, BMA, so, that was one FOIA that came in, another FOIA that came in was from Stan's LPS Midwest, they were looking for information about agreements that we have regarding copier and printer services. Uh, and then, uh, we also did get formally, I announced it maybe two minutes ago, but we did get formal notification that the, our Regional Office of Education, uh, audit that happened, uh, a few months ago, uh, we are in full recognition, and thanks to our administrative staff, and especially, uh, Jean and Mary for, uh, taking the lead on those, those compliance, it's stressful for sure, uh, but we were very well-prepared and, uh, we should be very proud of the work that everybody put in for that. And, we did find one piece of information that we're, currently has us working a little hard, so that's fun stuff, but we did, uh, find out, uh, and it wasn't anything that the people at Northwestern knew, it had to answer, so it's nothing that we probably could have known sooner than we. sooner than we did, but they are now working on a multi, multimillion dollar renovation to their arena and, to my arena and, so that means we probably won't have them for a graduation facility for the next two years at least. Now, the good thing about that, the bad thing about it is obviously it makes us change gears a little bit. The good thing about it is we've had great conversations about what we're trying to do and what things we want out of a graduation ceremony. Anyway, our first response, which we're still at least somewhat connected to, is we obviously called the Sears Center right away because they've hosted a lot of graduations. The bad thing about that is, you know, we're now, some schools have been going there for a number of years and so they obviously have their places on their docket, if you will. Others have joined in because there's more and more schools that have gone to the early start, Vernon Hills, Libertyville, Stevenson, maybe a few others next year that have joined in and so they're looking for spots a few weeks early. So, everybody now, if you think about it, has been looking at the Sears Center for the same, generally speaking, fourteen days of time, right? And, and there's a lot of schools out there that have interest in that. And the others, that's one conflict. The other piece of it is they're twice the cost probably, roughly speaking, at least probably twice the cost of what we were paying at Northwestern, generally speaking, probably somewhere from a twenty-five thousand dollar price day to a fifty thousand dollar price day at the Sears Center. And I think right now, they know they've got some leverage in terms of facilities. We're not even sure whether the other two school districts that were using Northwestern, which were Evanston and Uteer, we're not even sure what their plans are. So, they, we don't even know whether they're the districts that have inquired to the Sears Center after they found out like we did, so, but they didn't know about it, they did not know about it. The people that we dealt with at Northwestern said they found about, out about it, you know, right before the news release came out about the renovation there, so, we'd be here regardless. Which means, we are still in communication with the Sears Center, but they won't, it definitely wouldn't be for the day, day that we want, because currently, we're looking for Saturday the twenty-seventh, Saturday morning the twenty-seventh and of May, and that's definitely not available and so the closest thing we get to that is like a Sunday afternoon the twenty-first. And so, that's, we're still investigating that to a degree, but we're not even first on their docket for that time. So, we're right now just, we didn't want to cut off communication with them, we wouldn't know, well, of course, we're interested right now in what you have, but it's not perfect for us anyway. We've been doing a lot of talking about unique things, we've been doing, you know, number one, the driving an hour, some, you know, somewhere for a graduation ceremony, we've done it when it was at Northwestern, that's a different feel at the Sears Center, some good, some bad, but it's definitely a different feel. We're still investigating a few other venues that may be possibilities. University of Illinois Chicago, they have a venue about ten, they have a gym about ten thousand that we know they have graduation ceremonies in. University of Wisconsin at Milwaukee, but, you know, they're a similar size school and venue, but there's downsides to those as well, you're still driving an hour, it's out of our neighborhood and the cost, we have no idea whether they're available, we don't know what the cost is parking, you know it's gonna be an issue, and either one of those two venues. So, there's problems in every one of our solutions. So, the whole time though, we were talking about, well, you know, we're, we still have the opportunity if we want to, to keep discussing about, we used to do these things back for most of our centennial years, probably on football fields and in gymnasiums and things of that nature. So, we're not totally ruling that out, meaning that we could try to have it here. And it may not even be, it may be out of absolute necessity, right? So, I'm just trying to, right now, we're obviously been working on this the last twenty-four hours, that's the extent to which we've really been dealing with this and will continue to do it, but, you know, I do want to make sure that we've got the board in the conversation early on, so, Jim?
I don't know if their capacity is, but I know where Virginia Park and Island Park has been home to a lot of graduations as well.
Yeah, smaller scho, I think Deerfield and Highland Park are, have done it there, there's some issues there with weather, too, and the size, they're not, I don't think they can handle our size, but we will, you know, it's not that we are not contacting people, they're like...
Yeah, I think if you're looking at Milwaukee, especially, look at the United Center and some of those, because they have the capacity, they also have parkings and...
Right, yeah, so you're talking about a hundred thousand dollar at least venues for things like that, so, like even Allstate was...
Allstate was a hundred thousand, yeah. And they said they really don't even want it for graduations, but just, if you were, if you were getting there, you were talking about a hundred thousand, how would you start?
Have you noticed them?
At the Allstate, we, we did not investigate United Center, just, just that location.
That would be really high. What about the, there's a, the box play, but there's another...
That's the ex-University of Wisconsin Milwaukee Panther Pavilion.
So, we're, and we're still investigating.
They got some parking too.
Does our college have a, have a, without the parking sign?
You know, we need, you know, we need a gym that's seen at least ten thousand, right? Because we lose part of it, so, just, you know, so we're, we're gonna have to do something relatively quick, right?
You have to say with graduation...
Here, well, yeah, so, our first thought would be if we, like, we could, you know, theoretically, we could have a graduation on our football field, right? Like, not that, theoretically, we could do it, we talked about it, we, there's things outside our control, we give seating for about four thousand and other places, when they have, people still have on their football fields, they've been, after they get their important four thousand, and if you will, you need ticketed people, then after that, you know, other kids that come, siblings, other high school kids, when it's in the community, you draw other people after you get seating for, you know, at least four kids, four tickets per, per graduate. So, we've talked about that, we continue to talk about it, it's not, there's goods and bads to it, it's local, it's convenient to get to, right? We'd have to deal with some parking issues, we're gonna do security, police, and there's a lot of things we'd have to deal with, but we're already starting to think about it because if, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna make it a great graduation, you know, we're, we're excited about this centennial, we have some fun ideas, if we were to have it here, we're gonna celebrate it like crazy and the fact that, no, no, we're excited and proud to have it here at home and all that kind of stuff. So, we're still looking through all of our options. If, what we do, we did want to know if, if either individually or collectively, the board has feelings about, you know, stay off that day. And, you know, Sundays, we've done Saturday mornings, right? So, we've gotten used to Saturday mornings. Other people have Sunday graduations, it's not, you know, they do it quite frequently, but it is, you know, it's something that we were on our end, we at least wanted to tell the board that that's right now the only even remote possibility that we have at the Sears Center, is it Sunday the twenty-first. And we've already, people have already started calling, as you can imagine, two or three weeks ago, trying to confirm our graduation date, because they're trying to line up college graduations, our graduation, and so we have to relatively quickly commit to our date, so, anything you think of, don't hesitate to hear your shoo-est ideas in the next twenty-four hours, so, that's what kind of timeline we're really looking at right now. If we do have it at the football stadium and/or inside, we've, we've been, all been through that before, about backup plans and what happens if, you know, the weather, we've all been through it, so it's not like we can't do it, but it will take us months of, you know, it'll take us the whole year to put it together, right? How about you do it?
John, what about Friday evenings?
Their, Friday evenings are pretty high, you mean at Sears Center?
Anywhere.
Uh, we, yeah, we would be open, like, we would be open to Friday evenings, but they're pretty, right now, it's just a matter of finding the venue, right? So, if we're, if we were gonna do it here, we're gonna stick to the date that, if we were gonna do it on campus, we're gonna stick to our date, right? That's the one thing that, the luxury we have, is we'd be able to say, we're doing it on Saturday the twenty-seventh at our place, that's within our control. Right now, it's a little bit outside our control because those venues are in total control of the schedule, so. And then, you know, thinking about even going to Milwaukee or in UIC, it's a little, right? There's, we're not right around the corner from there, there's, people who have done it at the UIC said, when we checked there, they were talking about, their parents have to pay for parking, right? There's little things that go along with you when you do that, right?
Those are things, it's not changed.
But we'll continue, if you have any ideas or thoughts, let us know.
We gotta, you gotta find a long-term solution because there's no guarantee Northwestern's gonna let us come back in two years, they've been trying to get rid of us for years, not rid of us, but the neighborhood doesn't like us and the traffic and, you know, blah, 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 once they get the renovation, they may say, eh, no.
Right, yeah, we do, that absolutely came up from our team, that, you know, this isn't probably, whatever we do, right, it may be for multiple years and, so we'll keep, if it's okay with the board, we'll keep pressing all of our possibilities and even on Sunday, you know, we wanted to throw it out there because if it opens up at the twenty-seventh, at the afternoon of the twenty-seventh opens up, you know, we'll be in a tight timeframe to do it. It's still then twice, you know, we are still then talking about twice the cost, right? You're talking about a fifty thousand dollar investment, but...
As far as distance, you know, downtown Milwaukee's not that much farther than Northwestern from a time standpoint, it might be more miles, but here on the interstate, almost all the way, so, probably time-wise, it'd be the same or less, because some of that traffic gets to be pretty brutal once you try to get in there, so...
That's, yeah, so that's why we're kind of drew that circle on, you know, an hour and less than an hour. Yeah, we're, we're still open to that, we haven't got a lot of information out of University of Milwaukee or Wisconsin-Wilwaukee yet, but we'll keep working on that, we'll just, we'll keep working on UIC just to know, if anything else comes up, we'll throw it our way, so...
I think it'd be great to pull it up at home.
And we, if we end up back here, we're gonna make it to that, so, where that's always an option we have in our pocket. But it is, a lot of, there's a lot of problem logistical, right? There's a lot of logistical work with it too, right?
Well, the guy who stays, but a lot, not that it's impossible, but the weather's the impossible piece.
Right.
If it goes, it goes and you just make the best of it, I guess.
And the Sears Center is pretty, I mean, I don't know, like Northwestern was, it's, you know, they do it regularly, so there's not much work on our end if we end up at the Sears Center, they're used to doing them, it's just a matter of...
Finding the time.
Yeah, finding the time and, it's, that's not, that's not a bad drive on the weekends either, so...
Sears Center is in Hawthorne Estates, it's right on ninety, past Schomburg, about four miles, five miles. I'd be extra cabbellis.
I wouldn't know.
Any other questions on that or any of you guys in the seats, cheap seats down there, anything I forget, what do we talk about that is an issue? You know, we have talked about worst-case scenario, you know, if we did have to be here, right? And so, we'd already processed, well, what would we do? Well, we try to, if weather was bad and we planned on having it on the football field, we try to give ourselves enough of a window of opportunities to say about it. It's raining at nine, we're gonna have this thing at eleven, it looks to be clear by then, make sure everybody knows that, right, that we're a little dependent on weather, but if we're a total washout, right, and we go inside, the only way we feasibly be able to do it is to have two ceremonies. We talked about it, it's not the end of the world, right? It's not what we would plan to do, but we'd have to get two thou, two five hundred kids' ceremonies through probably in our gym over here, you know, just...
At that point, it is what it is. Don't you make that decision here, you're all in.
We, you know, people that, people that have done it outside have always done that, like those kinds of stuff.
Yeah, there's still a lot of places that do it outside and you just have a plan to accomplish it.
Yeah, we did it rain, so, it was a nice feel.
Right, they, we do have good terms, so that's, that's helpful. Well, if you guys have any feedback or ideas, please just shoot them to us, and, thank you. And that's all I have for my report.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Let's move along to new business. Item A is the approval of prevailing wage rates for laborers, women, mechanics employed for work at Warren Township High School.
I move to approve the resolution adopting the prevailing wage rate for laborers, workmen and mechanics employed for work at Warren Township High School District 121 for the twenty sixteen seventeen school year.
Second.
Roll call.
Oh, no, I have a question first.
Oh, darn.
I know. I, I notice we're using twenty fifteen wages, we don't have a new twenty sixteen wages.
We do not have a new twenty sixteen wage report in the resolution, we modify the resolution to incorporate two thousand sixteen when it does come out.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to be sure, we are cutting...
Yeah, the state is behind or the county or whoever.
It's the state.
Yeah, we're not, we've been waiting for them to publish, so...
That's, that's what I thought, I just wanted to be sure that we were not tying ourselves into an older rate.
No, we're, we're fine.
Okay, thank you, Carol.
Roll call.
Motion by Biandi, second by Walls. Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mrs. Biandi?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have seven yes, motion carries.
Next item is the approval to expand funds for sixteen seventeen school, sixteen seventeen.
I move to approve allowing the district to spend up to twenty-five percent of the preliminary first draft of the FY seventeen expenditure budget until a final FY seventeen budget is adopted by the Board of Education.
Second.
Carol? Yes. In the past couple of years, we have done a natural seed dollar fund, do you remember how we did that?
Yes, yes.
It, you're right.
Um, right now, our budget's about fifty-six million dollars, so, I should remember that from last year, so we could...
Five point six, eleven point two, and then another five percent would be about fifteen million.
Fifteen million.
That's about twenty-five percent. Everybody have a feeling?
I withdraw my motion and amend it. I move to approve allowing the district to spend up to twenty-five percent...
Of the million.
Fifteen, oh, twenty, uh, fifteen million, thank you, of the preliminary first draft of the FY seventeen expenditure budget until a final FY seventeen budget is adopted by the Board of Education.
I'll withdraw my first, second and second.
Is this your second second or your first second? It's second. Roll call.
Did you get all that, Jean?
Well, the motion is by Biandi, second by Munda. Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mrs. Biandi?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have seven yes, motion carries.
Next item is the approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education of Warren Township High School District 121 and the Warren Township High School Federation of Teachers.
I move to approve the understanding between the Board of Education of Warren Township High School District 121 and the Warren Township High School Federation of Teachers. A Council of Light County Federation of Teachers, Local Number 504, IFT, AFT, AFL, CIO, District 121 Retirement Incentives, Compensation and Wages for New Employees, Horizontal Movement and the Compensation Schedule, Schedule of Teachers and Security. Second.
Roll call. Any questions? Roll call, sir.
Motion by Walls, second by Munda. Ms. Campbell?
I'm abstaining because I did not vote for the original contract.
Mrs. Biandi?
I abstained also for the same reason.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have five yes and two abstention, motion carries.
Next item is the agreement with Six Flags Great America.
I move to approve the group outing agreement with Six Flags Great America for September seventeenth, twenty sixteen.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Munda, second by Drake. Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Biandi?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have seven yes, motion carries.
Next item is the revised staffing plan for physical year seventeen.
I move to approve the revised full year seventeen staffing plan as presented. Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Drake, second by Munda. Mrs. Biandi?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Okay, we're gonna have three motions here for the payment of the bills. The first one is, I move to approve the payment of check three three zero seven two seven to FGM for thirty... to FGM for thirteen-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Thirty-nine, seven.
Roll call.
Motion by Anderson, second by Conway. Mr. Walls.
Yes.
Mrs. Biandi.
No.
Mr. Drake.
Yes.
Ms. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Munda.
Yes.
Mrs. Conway.
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
I have six yes and one no, motion carries.
And I move to approve the payment of check three-three-seven-four-three.
Three-three-zero.
Three-three-zero-seven-four-three, into Hodges and Leesey for five thousand one-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Anderson, second by Biandi, uh, Munda, I'm sorry. Mr. Drake.
Yes.
Ms. Campbell.
No.
Mr. Walls.
Yes.
Mrs. Conway.
Yes.
Mrs. Biandi.
No.
Mr. Munda.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
I have five yes and two no, motion carries.
What's our final number, Carol?
Uh, two million, seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand, six-hundred-and-three dollars and sixty-four cents.
Okay, I move to approve the payment of the bills for six-fourteen-two thousand sixteen in the amount of two million, seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand, six-hundred-and-three dollars and sixty-four cents.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Anderson, second by Munda. Mr. Walls.
Yes.
Ms. Campbell.
Yes.
Mrs. Conway.
Yes.
Mrs. Biandi.
Yes.
Mr. Drake.
Yes.
Mr. Munda.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
I have seven yes, motion carries.
Next item is the approval of the personnel recommendations for Exhibit Eight.
I move to approve Exhibit Eight, Personnel Recommendations, two-ninety-six through three-on-one, as posted.
Mr. Drake, again, second. He was one letter ahead.
Motion by Munda, second by Drake. Ms. Campbell.
Yes.
Mrs. Biandi.
Yes.
Mrs. Conway.
Yes.
Mr. Walls.
Yes.
Mr. Drake.
Yes.
Mr. Munda.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Uh, yes.
I have seven yes, motion carries.
Next item is approval of the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes for May twenty-four, two thousand sixteen.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes for